It's nice to be in the office. I appreciate that. So, we've been watching you. Yeah. We're sitting with another head. Yeah. Oh, I have. So, we have lost over a hundred. So, we just had a change. It's just, um, so, we could tell. So, but the house is on our bench. It's basically, um, down. So, we just go out and then we can approach it. Um, it's nice to be in the office. Yeah. But, me, I appreciate you. Yeah. Uh, it's definitely, uh, we're sitting with another head. Yeah. Just to, uh, oh, I have, so, yeah. So, we, uh, over, uh, over, so, you just gotta change. And so, um, yeah, it's, uh, it's just, um, so, we could tell. So, we could tell. So, we could tell. So, we've been watching you. Yeah. Yeah. We were, uh, we were, uh, we were, uh, so, we just gotta change. And so, um, but the house is on our bench. It's basically, um, down. So, we go, um, our houses are on the ground. So, we just go out and then we can approach it. Um, it's nice to be in the office. Yeah. But, we've been watching you. Yeah. Yeah. We were, uh, we were, uh, we were, uh, so, we've been watching you. Yeah. Uh, my question was, uh, this work. It's just, um, it's not, um, right. Um, and so, we could tell. So, um, but the house is on our bench. It's basically, um, down. So, we go, um, our houses are on the ground. So, we just go out and then we can approach it. Um, it's nice to be in the office. Yeah. Uh, we're sitting with another head. 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 Yeah. Uh, we're sitting with another head.[483.11]
Include the AutoZone location that we approved a year ago? Am I thinking about that correctly? And next to that would be Stevens Market. Am I thinking about this correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And then behind it, a big parking lot, which stands to reason that could be better used. I understand that. And across the street are the medical buildings leading up to and all the way to the parking lot that was used by 99 Cent Store or whatever its new incarnation is. It's just interesting that we're carving out these little tiny bits, but maybe it's, you know, we're 98% there and this is the 2% that gets us to 100% whole. Is that one way to think about it?
Correct. And I will note residential overlay two is not being requested for an amendment tonight. Overlay two does already allow by right the zoning and the overlay does already allow for three stories itself, so.
Okay. All right. Thanks. That's my question.
Commissioner Abbey?
Thank you, Chair Lagerquist. Let's see. Let's see, Mr. White. Now, the two projects that you mentioned that were on Main Street residential were south of Main Street, correct? Not on the north side of Main Street?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Abbey. That's correct, on the southern side of Main Street.
Okay. And Commissioner Comden's question was in regard to those residential one overlays that were on the north side of Main Street as shown in this diagram. Okay, so there have not been any residential three stories approved north of Main Street along this corridor, correct?
Again, thank you for your question. To my knowledge, no. And I believe, I don't know, I don't believe we have any formal applications for projects to go three stories on the northern side of East Main Street at this time either.
Okay. This question is for staff or perhaps the Director as well. I know that this current, this resolution before us is to try to get us to be in line with the housing element implementation, but coming up on April 9th, there'll be a discussion of objective design standards, and I would imagine included in that would be setbacks and step backs. And one of the things that, at a previous meeting of the Planning Commission, we had passed a resolution to city staff to, one, bring up objective design standards as soon as possible, and number two, within that, take a look very closely at setbacks and step backs as they relate to higher buildings that are directly adjacent to single-family residential dwellings. I didn't see anything in this item tonight that specifically was in relation to objective design standards that would deal with setbacks and step backs. Was that intentional?
So, setbacks and setbacks are not objective design standards. They're development standards. So, it's a little bit different, and I know they kind of, the two get conflated. So, I just wanted to clarify that. There wasn't necessarily a look at a step down, which could be included in the development code. It could be contemplated with the increase in height as well. So, if the Commission wanted us to take a look at that, that's something that we could look at and come back with as part of this project.
So, as a part of item number two tonight, is that, that's what you're referring to?
Yes. So, we would be able to go back and study, you know, I think because of the narrow nature of these lots, we'd have to look at, you know, what would work and also help to allow that additional story while also making sure that we're respecting the kind of, you know, challenges of having a larger building next to a single-family residential.
If we were to take that action and to say, take a look at that, the nature of those development standards, would that mean this item would come back to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And I think at that point, we would renotice and, you know, start fresh to make sure that people understood that we were looking at those potential standards as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Winter.
Thank you, Chair. So, did I hear you correctly that the 40 feet is basically in line with what is allowed in those areas for commercial lots?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Winter. That's correct. The T 4.5 zoning, the underlying zoning outside of the area denoted in the highlighted yellow on your screen, those parcels would be allowable to go to the three stories.
And this probably is a question for Director Diamond. Is there some type of standards for air conditioning units and equipment? I'm just wondering, 40 feet, you know, seems reasonable to me, but I'm just thinking like 12 and 12 and 12, and what if there's like an air conditioning unit and it's more than 12 feet each? And do you ask them to put it in the center of the buildings? I mean, what kind of screening are we going to get with something like a three-story building that probably would have air conditioning in it? What have you done in the past for the other developments like that?
I'll actually defer to Grant on what the rules say about that, but I think in general, there are a lot of creative ways to make sure that we can screen equipment from view, and that's also something that we can further beef up, and we're always looking to improve on, whether it be at the ground floor or on patios or on the rooftop, which are kind of the three scenarios that we more typically see than having people put, you know, things internal to the building just because it's more difficult to do so. But Grant, maybe you can speak to that piece as well.
Yeah. I think as we've seen applications and certainly projects come through on the plan check side of things, the ask has been to, you know, kind of locate those air conditioning units to the center of the building, screen them effectively from your line of sight from the public right away. Additionally, parapets have been used to effectively screen. We've also seen the newer developments such as KB Homes at Sea View, they've used, they put air conditioning units in their front patio areas, and then they've screened those individually with their own, with their fences within their private patio spaces as well. So, I think there are creative ways, as Director Diamond stated, to effectively screen AC and condensing units in developments in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Zucker.
Thank you, Chair. So, I just want to make sure I understand kind of procedurally. So, if we were not to take this action tonight, the, would it be that the actual developable height limit is two stories? Or would it be that there's basically an inconsistency between our housing element, you know, and these overlays? And if someone, a developer, was trying to figure out, they would just have two different things that completely contradict each other and not know what to do?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Zucker. Yeah, so the underlying zoning allows you to go to three stories, 40 feet, which is proposed as this amendment. The overlay is on preclude from doing so, and then to further align with the housing element and what's being requested by the Housing Element Program, 18.3, we would, the amendment would then align those, the heights for developers and the community.
Okay. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
What we would do effectively, you know, what we're saying is our housing element is telling us to do these things, but it doesn't mean we have to do it in a vacuum. And certainly, if we moved, I just want to be clear about this, it's typically not what I would say, but if you, let's say, recommended denial, and we went to council and they said absolutely not and denied it, we would just need to transmit that to HCD and help them understand we went through the process of doing this, we were unable to do so. We can't compel anyone to vote in any certain way. I mean, certainly, this is what our housing element is certified and wants us to do, but the reality is that there are going to be things in the housing element that may not get adopted. I just want to be really clear about that to show you kind of the alternative here. But, you know, to your point, Commissioner Abbey, there also is an opportunity to look at this the same way we do most of the rest of the city, which is that the top floor doesn't get to be 100% of the floor below it. And so, that may be a way that we could look to kind of mitigate this issue so that we can feel comfortable with something that feels a little bit put upon us by the state that we didn't necessarily, you know, they pushed for this, really. I think it came, you know, through the community as well, but there's definitely, you know, things to balance here.
Great. That's helpful. And then, just wanted to make sure I understood Commissioner Winter's point. So, currently today, if a developer wanted to build an 100% commercial, not mixed-use building, three-story office building, they could. But if they wanted to build a two-story or a three-story mixed-use with commercial retail on the ground floor and two residential, they could not? Is that right?
Thank you. Yes, that's correct. Yeah, the residential overlay one, no building shall exceed a height of two stories. There are some other provisions within overlay one regarding building types. So, the commercial block building type is prohibited within the residential overlay one, and then certain building types, specifically the live-work and the rowhouse building type, are allowed, but they need to have an unbroken facade length of a minimum of 50 feet. So, there are some further provisions when it comes to specific building types, should they be requested and proposed.
Got it. Okay, so in residential overlay one, nothing could be three stories, even if it was purely commercial?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Okay. I think I have some follow-on questions. So, but we're moving, or the objective is to change it so that it will be mixed use, right? So that, for overlay one?
Thank you for your question, Chair Lagerquist. So, the zoning right now of T 4.5 does allow a number of land uses. Those land uses at this time could be mixed use. We are looking to just amend the allowable height of these parcels.
Okay. So, on that, a couple things. So, to Commissioner Abbey's point, on the north side, I mean, that is also elevated. Like, as you drive up Main Street, that north side is elevated, so you're effectively increasing from the street height, from the street level, much taller, and I think that could potentially affect those residents behind the building. In addition to that, if a developer came in and added low-income housing, then could they then increase their floor, the floor height, or increase the building height based on those laws? So, then it could effectively be taller than three stories?
Thank you for your question, Chair Lagerquist. Certainly, yeah. If a developer came in and proposed to utilize, invoke state law such as density bonus, and their project received concessions and waivers, they, you know, they can use their concessions, waivers, as projects has come before you in the past, and you see them use concession waivers to utilize and, I guess, manipulate and, you know, get creative in either increasing the height or some sort of standard to their benefit.
Okay. So, then overlay one was designated years ago, right? That's been in place for a while. I mean, is there an opportunity to, I don't know, make it more complicated, but create a different overlay for the, you know, for Main Street or the north side of Main Street as opposed to the rest of it, and so that we can pull that out? And then, I don't know if that's an option or just something we could, worth discussion? I don't know. How solid are the overlays?
I think it's, we could come back and do an analysis. Or additionally, I think we could split them up, or we could further create standards or provisions that need to be addressed on the Main Street side within the overlay. I think that could be part of a recommendation tonight. Director Diamond, do you have any further thoughts?
I think there's a lot of options of what we can do here. I mean, they are two very different streets and yet very similar, so we could look at splitting them up, creating another zone, or again, having other standards. And we would want, I think for that type of thing, if it was something super minor and we knew exactly what it was, I'd say include it in your recommendation and we'll move along, but I'd rather come back to you.
Somewhere I read that there, and forgive me, but there were new additional building requirements that only included commercial block building type and live-work, rowhouse building types with unbroken facade length of 50 feet. Can you just clarify that? Like, what are we saying here?
Yeah, thank you. As you mentioned, so the residential overlay one currently, again, has the height limit, but in addition to the height limit that is being proposed, there are two other standards, one being the commercial block type is prohibited. So, any proposal for development within this overlay cannot use the commercial block. And secondly, the live-work and rowhouse units could be utilized and proposed, but they would need to have an unbroken facade length of at minimum 50 feet within these parcels.
And those standards are existing?
Correct, and we're not proposing to amend those.
And they would be carried into the new one as well?
Correct.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. Commissioners, do you have any further questions? No? Well, we don't have an applicant tonight, so moving on to, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this matter?
Thank you, Chair. We do not.
All right. Thank you. Then I will close it. Okay. Commissioners, do we want to deliberate on what we'd like to do? Commissioner Abbey?
Yeah, let's deliberate. I think it would be good to have that discussion. I think in general, the GPAC is moving to three stories in general, and so I agree in general, that's a good standard. So, I'm not opposed to that, but I do think there are nuances to this. And I think Commissioner Comden and Chair Lagerquist brought up some very good points. And so, that's, those are the things, I'd like to see this come back. I'm not ready to make a motion. I'd like to hear the discussion amongst commissioners, but I do think there need to be setback and step-back rules. It might be that the setback and step-back rules on particular parcels might preclude a third story in part or possibly in whole, depending on how deep the lot is. I think the setback and step-back rules should apply to Thompson and to Main Street. It might be harder to comply at full three-story on Main Street, especially on the narrow lots north. But if we come up with one standard that has a sufficient height to setback ratio, whether that's, I won't suggest what that should be tonight, but I think if we look along those lines, I think we might be able to craft, ask staff to look into that and craft something and bring it back to us.
I actually had another question. So, on Main Street in particular, that, can you go back to the overlay map? So, how many parcels are we talking about, say, on either side or total? I mean, lots, some of these parcels are quite small, right? And they're currently existing, you know, what used to be residential houses that have been converted to businesses, right? So, with the lots, in order to get a building, I mean, are we talking about combining lots and that kind of thing in order to get a three-story building on one of those?
Thank you for your question. So, we have encompassed in total in residential overlay one, we have 93 parcels, and then 46 of those are along Main Street and 47 are along Thompson Boulevard. Yeah, I mean, we have existing setback standards within the Midtown Corridor's development code that will give you your building envelope where you could then build up and propose your development. Certainly, if a developer came in and proposed, say, a lot merger or a lot line adjustment, we would facilitate that as part of the formal application. It's in the realm of possibility.
Right. Okay. Further deliberation? Commissioner Zucker?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, definitely an interesting issue, and appreciate that a lot of work went into the housing element and a lot of work is going into GPAC. And, you know, I'm like here, shooting from the hip, just seeing this, you know, and folks who have spent hours and hours and hours on it. You know, I think, like, generally speaking, for me, you know, the kind of like height of kind of multi-story building next to single-family, I think is maybe, maybe less of a sacred cow than I think for others. I'm, you know, I know there are other parts of our city that allow six stories, right? And that are, I don't know if they're right next to single-family. I think some might be, you know, but if not right next to, very, very close. You know, I, until very recently, lived in a three-story apartment building that was next to some single-family homes and, you know, that is what I, the, before I moved to Ventura, as a kid, I lived in Oakland, and the street I was on had single-family homes next to eight-story apartment buildings. It was just like, you know, it's, it's something in some urban areas is just really normal. And so, I think for me, that feels much more normal, and I, you know, it doesn't feel, I mean, I think this area, frankly, in my opinion, is like the most kind of architecturally charming, picturesque, like, part of our city, right? But, you know, I also don't think it would destroy it to have, you know, have three-story buildings. So, I guess, like, big picture, that's, you know, some of where I think about this. I mean, I'm interested in the idea around kind of setbacks and step backs, and, you know, it's not necessarily my priority, but I, you know, I would be open to it if that was important to fellow commissioners. I do think the question of like, one, are these lots really practically developable anyway? Because so many of them are so small and, you know, to Commissioner Comden's point, pretty shallow, I think is a real question. So, maybe some of this is a moot point anyway. And if we have too much setbacks and step backs, are they even less developable? I wonder, too, you know, I don't understand too much of the difference between setbacks and step backs. I mean, my vague understanding is that the, like, setbacks are pieces of land that you can't build on because it's, you need to be set back from the end of the lot, and stepbacks would be, you have to, you can build one less story. And so, I think, you know, unless that's, that's wrong, and someone correct me if it is, I think it would be important to look at those two issues separately. I think the step backs could be a lot less, you know, impinging on the ability to actually build something there than a setback could be. If the lot is so small, you know, having a big setback might mean you really can't build anything, whereas having a setback, it's kind of, well, you can just build, you know, kind of two stories here and three stories here. So, yeah, those are my thoughts. Pretty open-minded on this and looking forward to hearing from other commissioners.
Commissioner Winter.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to ask, Grant, is it just, I just want to clarify, residential overlay one, that's all we're doing for this motion, and it's only the yellow parcel, the yellow hatched parcels, correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Winter. That's correct. It's the yellow highlighted purple hatched parcels on the left side of your screen.
Okay. All right. Just needed to clarify that. Thank you.
Commissioner Comden? Oh. Did you want to go? Okay.
Thank you, Chair. So, as Commissioner Abbey said, I am just thinking, the south side of both on overlay one, I think it's entirely appropriate. The north side, more so on Main Street, but to some degree on Thompson. I think just some sensitivity might be called for here. Overlay two, I'm fine with. That's in the clear. But I, so, I'm going to make a motion, maybe it's a little early, but I'm going to make a motion that we just send it back to staff for them to explore the north side of both Main Street because of the elevation and the proximity to all of the private residential behind it. And as you can see, it's almost piano keys on Thompson. I really haven't done a visual analysis of the north side there, but the south side, I think, is completely appropriate and developable that way. But just a slight tweaking to see if setbacks, step backs, and/or other sensitivities might be brought to this to make this what it needs to be without it getting out of hand, I guess I'd say. Thanks.
Director, go ahead.
I did want to offer up to, to some of the points that were made, that there are a lot of very narrow lots that are complicated to develop. One of the things that is part of kind of this larger conversation that you'll see in one of the next items is to encourage lot consolidation. Sometimes that's great, and sometimes it's less great, and it changes the character a little bit. And so, we could also look at, you know, when you're developing an individual lot, not having as much restriction because likely that would throw you into a variance situation anyway, coming in and saying, hey, I have this really narrow lot, so it's very difficult. I have nowhere to put my, you know, rooftop equipment. I need that third story to block whatever it is. And that should people do, you know, let's say, buy up an entire lot, that those have way more detailed development standards that help kind of mitigate for a larger building that creates a three-story wall against the residential behind it.
Commissioner McCarty?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to follow up on Commissioner Zucker's comments with regard to, well, the discussion about the lot sizes here. And, you know, to see what size lots these are, you kind of got to get your face right into this picture because the lot lines are the light gray lines that really you can't even see unless you're actually looking for them. And I'm not averse to having staff take a look at the effects of setbacks and stepbacks, but I am, I'm really not all that concerned because I think these lot sizes are so small relatively that encumbering them with setback and step-back requirements may very well preclude any development or significant development on any of these lots that would be consistent with what we're trying to do, the infill-first strategy. And Chair Lagerquist, to your point, I acknowledge too that a lot of the businesses that are there already are previous single-family homes, and so they're all very small businesses that line the street there. Anyway, so, bottom line, I am, I am not so concerned about detriment, potential development that is detrimental to neighbors behind these lots because they're so small to start with. Thank you.
So, to that point, just as to the Commission, you know, I think part of our job is to maybe look into our crystal balls a little bit and, you know, try to, you know, have some forethought on what could happen and, you know, protect those areas that we, you know, deem necessary. And to staff's point, our next subject is lot line adjustments and consolidation, and so I think that potential is still there. You know, if a developer comes in and they combine three lots, then suddenly they have the space to put a three-story building directly next to a residential neighborhood. So, my recommendation is, you know, I think I would agree with Commissioner Comden, let's see if we can send it back and get a little more. And I would be fine, honestly, with just the north side of Main Street. I, you know, Thompson Corridor, it's pretty flat through there, and I think there's a couple two-story motels, and I don't think it changes that atmosphere nearly as much as Main Street. I think the Main Street, that Midtown Corridor is pretty beloved, a lot of cute little businesses, and I, you know, my daughter's dentist is on that street and has adorable little house, and I just hate to see. So, I think, you know, our job is to make sure that we are looking forward and planning so that things that we don't want to happen, don't happen. So, I'd like to send it back as well. I'd like to, if we could, provide a little more direction to staff, what we want that to look like, whether that be split the overlay or are we just going to do step backs and setbacks? Any thoughts on that? Go ahead, Commissioner Zucker.
I'd be interested in Rachel's idea around maybe having something different for lot consolidations versus regular. I mean, I do agree with Commissioner McCarty that some of those lots are so small, it seems like some, yeah, even like modest setback or step-back requirements could make it just really tough to build on them. But, yeah, if you did consolidate two or three together, that's, that's where we could get, I think, more of the issue that Commissioner Lagerquist is raising, and so that's what I'd be most interested in.
Commissioner Abbey?
I wanted to ask a question of Commissioner Comden. You made a motion. Was that a motion, your idea?
I did.
Okay. I'd like to second your motion.
Oh, can you repeat your motion? I thought you were just.
No, I said, it might be too early to do so, but I am suggesting that this go back to staff for some nuance specifically on the north side of Main Street because of the, the elevation looks to be six to eight feet up to where the homes are, so that would add to it. But I think the nuance on both north sides may be appropriate, maybe less so on Thompson, but on Main Street, I do think so. I would, unless there's a really great project, there's a lot of infill opportunities in this town. I drive around and I call some of them. I drive around and I call some of them tumbleweed factories because that's the only thing that's, that's going on there. This is not an area I really want to futz around with too much unless there's a spectacular project. So I think some nuance to the overlay strategy here on the north side of Main Street is what I'm suggesting primarily. But staff might, might just come back with some, some ideas on how we might be able to get this accomplished without significantly changing the idea.
Commissioner Abbey.
Would you be willing to accept a friendly amendment to have them at least study the lots on the north side of Thompson?
Yes, yes. Because of the, the number of residences that are directly abutting, yes.
Okay, so we're talking about north side of Main Street and north side of Thompson in that area? Okay, I second that.
Director.
I just wanted to request, and I think this is part of your motion, that we not give us the certain, we'll start from scratch and renotice and come back to you with a fully renoticed public hearing.
That's fine.
All right, I think we have a motion in a second. Mr. Clerk, can we call the roll?
Thank you, Chair. We can call the vote. And that's to direct staff to have a second look at, to study lots on the north side of Thompson and the north side of Main Street with a little more flurry than that, but yes. Okay, you can now enter your vote. All votes have been entered. Six ayes.
Thank you, everyone. May I just ask the question while we're on that map, the school on the south side of Main Street, that has been the subject to some discussion for development. Can, Director, can you give us some, some input on what's going on there in 2025, please?
I'll have to get back to you on that. That's something that at our later, regular scheduled meeting in April, I'll put on with my comments at the end.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
I'll miss that meeting, but okay, thank you.
Then I'll also follow up with an email to the whole group and let you know, yeah. Will you watch the video? That's great.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, same project number. This is the implementation of Housing Element Objective 18.4. I'm just gonna go ahead and turn it over to Rachel.
Good evening. Thank you so much. So yes, as mentioned, again, this is Housing Element Objective 18.4, lot line adjustment fees and incentives. Again, the housing element is kind of broken up into a few main categories. There's programs and then each program usually has a set of objectives, sometimes just one objective or sometimes four objectives, et cetera. So this is 18.4, objective of the larger program 18, which is the infill first strategy. So 18.4 is specifically to facilitate lot consolidation. There were quite a few bullet points built within this one, some that we've already met, so I'll talk about that in just a second. But the main two that we do still have to complete would be waive lot line adjustment fees for multifamily, mixed use and affordable housing projects as well as do outreach. So again, some of that additional background is that the current status of objective 18.4 is we have met that the lot line adjustments are processed ministerially. So that means that someone just has to submit an application and that's if it's only a lot line adjustment. If it's a larger housing project to lot line and then do a housing project, then, then that's different. If it's just solely for the lot line adjustment. And then providing flexibility within agreements, that is something that we've also already completed, again with those applications and then just going forward with the agreement that yes, you can do this lot line adjustment or no, you can't. So again, to complete the objective, the city needs to waive lot line adjustment fees, which are currently $3,247. This is for multifamily and mixed use projects that are less than .05 acres or affordable housing projects and there is no acreage. And then outreach to eligible property owners. So the city would do this by sending out flyers in the mail to any, you know, property that is eligible for this, as well as continue with our workshops that we already do as a housing services division to meet Housing Element Program 25. So our staff recommends the following recommendation, waive lot line adjustment fees for projects that merge lots, including multifamily and mixed use projects that are less than .05, .5 acres or, and less, and for affordable housing projects regardless of their acreage.
All done?
Yes. Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Commissioner, Commissioner Zucker, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Do we have an estimate of the, say, total like annual fiscal impact that, that this might have? I mean, how many of these applications do we get per year usually?
We did work with finance to kind of come up with a number as well as planning. And there's, I think, Grant, when we first spoke about this, there was less than probably a dozen a year for the lot line adjustments typically. So it's not a huge amount or things like that. It's, you know, a handful or two, but not a ton.
Maybe like $30,000 a year annually or something like that?
Maybe even less, but yeah.
And then where does that money go? Does that, does that money go straight into the community development department? Does that go into the city's general fund?
That goes into the city's general fund.
Great. I think that's, that's all my questions for now.
Commissioner Abbey.
Thank you, Chair Lagerquist. I had a question. I saw two different numbers. One, this slide says 0.5 and the other one, I don't know if it was talking about two different things, but the previous slide was zero, was .05.
Yes, there was a typo. So the, the staff recommendation is the correct amount. It's .5 acres.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That cleared, that cleared my queue. I had the same question as well. My only question then is, I mean, is there a need to make up that 30K, like in the fees?
Not necessarily. I mean, what happens is, you know, we charge fees. When we look at our fee schedule, which we are updating now, we adjust by CPI every year, but then we also look at really how much it costs to do business. So we look at every single staff member that's involved and how much time they put in, what it actually costs to maintain that person. And that's how we come up with kind of the 100% maximum of that fee. And that's what we should really be collecting from people. That being said, there are a number of fees that are kind of out of line with what we really want to charge people or what I like to call the straight face test. You look at it and go, wow, it's $5,000 for this little tiny thing because you don't realize how much time goes into doing everything, right? And so there are a lot of fees that are tuned down from that 100% to incentivize certain types of development or to allow people to remove some barriers to entry. And that's really where this recommendation comes down to, is just removing that barrier to entry so that, for example, a much smaller project doesn't have to pay this fee on top of all of the other fees that they're paying to develop a project. So we're still in general for lot, you know, lot consolidations, ending up with other fees from a project. Overall though, what we're looking to do is basically collect, and we're legally allowed to collect up to the amount that it costs to operate our department and all of the different pieces of divisions and departments throughout the city that contribute to the entitlement process. But often those numbers aren't exact and the city, you know, helps subsidize that frankly. So technically on paper, this would be a subsidy by the city of about that $30,000 and it's potentially more because this may incentivize more people to do this when they maybe wouldn't have because of the fee, right? So there's an opportunity to look at other fees to kind of balance that out. And as we, you know, go through time, we can adjust as needed. So it's not that we'll see an overall loss of $30,000. It's that, you know, we may adjust in other places to make up for, which we can do legally. At this point though, there is no plan to specifically try to recover that revenue.
Commissioner McCarthy.
Thanks for the presentation. I have no qualms with, with staff's recommendation. I think what's planned here does support our infill strategy. And notwithstanding my previous, my previous comments regarding small lots, this certainly would, very well would facilitate creation of larger lot sizes. But I appreciate the analysis and I would move that we approve this recommendation.
Commissioner McCarthy, I haven't done the public hearing yet, so.
My apologies, my apologies.
No worries. Commissioner Comden, did you have another?
Thanks, Chair. I would like to posit the idea of, because a half an acre is different than, you know, .05 is a 2,000 square foot lot, which is two garages. A half acre lot, if you can picture this, is about 150 feet by 125 feet. That's a, that's a pretty substantial footprint. And because cities are constantly trying to find money to balance their budgets, et cetera, I like doing this for the affordable housing. I would like to recommend that we consider having the fee, 50% of the fee for the, for any development that's a half acre or less that is not affordable, so that there is recapture of the expense. And Commissioner, I'm sorry, Director, how long does it take to do a lot line adjustment? How many people are involved?
I'll actually defer to the staff if you want to walk through the process.
Thank you, Chair Comden. So typically a lot line adjustment would be a ministerial process. We would get a, receive a formal application. We would take them through our development advisory committee process. That typically lasts about 30 days. We would then return a application, sorry, a letter to the applicant, either deeming the proposed lot line adjustment complete or incomplete. Should it be incomplete, there's typically comments regarding surveying or minor details. If it is incomplete, we'll, we'll ask them to address those comments at their convenience and then return the application for another DAC review. Typically, I would say by the time we go through the process and complete the formal letter and everything is done, returned to the applicant in the approved form and signed off, notarized by the director, I, I would book roughly about three to four months. Certainly it could go quicker. Certainly we've had projects, lot line adjustments go longer depending on the complexity of them.
Okay, that's the amount of time to do it. But how many people touch it and how long do they spend touching it from the city's aspect?
Sure. I would say the majority of people that are the, planning staff and the city surveyor and the city engineer are the, the three biggest parties that will review these applications.
So it, I mean, it's not just push it across the desk, have someone review it, it's stamped. So that, that reinforces my, my comment, which is for low-income projects, yes, we want to give every incentive for that to happen. For other market rate stuff, let's be sensitive, but let's not go to zero. That's my comment.
Commissioner Zucker.
Yeah, I appreciate that, that question is, you know, I would love a little more specificity, actually, like, you know, and ballpark estimate, but like number of staff hours maybe that's spent, that gets spent on something like a lot line adjustment. Is it, is it 50 hours? Is it 100 hours, 200 hours?
I would say certainly well below 50, depending on the complexity of it. I'd probably say 20 hours maybe, at most from, from initial application to a final review to working with the applicant in between, going to meetings, discussing, et cetera.
Great. That's really helpful. Thank you.
Are there any other questions before I open up the public hearing? Okay. So I will do that. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this matter this evening?
Thank you, Chair. We do not have any speakers on this item.
Okay, great. Thanks. I will close that. And with that, any further comments or do we have a motion? What are, what's the commission's feeling? Go ahead, Commissioner McCarthy.
Now I'd like to make my motion that we accept staff's recommendation as, as proposed.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion in a second.
Could we have further discussion?
We can. Go ahead, Commissioner Abbey.
My, my original reaction on, on this was that this was gonna pass through without any problem at all. And I'm not opposed to staff's recommendation, but I think Commissioner Comden brings up an interesting point. That's my comment.
Commissioner Zucker.
Yeah, I similarly would echo the same sentiments. I was originally inclined to say, this looks good, let's move it along. But, but yeah, I think Commissioner Comden does make an interesting point. I think it's helpful when there are ways to incentivize affordable projects and give them that little extra leg up. They're competing for the same land often as the for-profit developers are. And yeah, I'm, I'm definitely open. I do think, hearing the staff time estimate, I, I think the current fee schedule is probably unreasonable. I mean, you know, if maybe, maybe it takes, you know, $1,000 worth of, of staff time, maybe 2,000, but you know, over 3,000 seems, seems maybe not appropriate for, for that amount of staff time. But, but yeah, I would, I would be, be supportive of a, of a motion that would be half the current fee for, for, for-profit developments and then for affordable housing projects, zero fee.
I think my only, not really rebuttal, but just kind of a separate thought on that is that, I mean, you know, city staff, they are dealing with this day in and day out. And I kind of feel like, you know, if, if this is somewhere where they feel like they can adequately incentivize, I mean, a half acre is, is not very big. And so it's still going to be a very small development in that case. And so I really don't have any issues with, with staff's recommendation. I feel like it's probably adequate since it's a half acre. If it was bigger than that, I would, I would definitely agree. But I am, just another thought that since, go ahead.
Could I ask staff, what, what can you build on a half acre? Generally, let's say it's one and two bedrooms. Could you, could you put six units on?
Thank you, your question, Chair Comden. I, I think depending on your zoning and then if you're within a CAF1 base code such as the Midtown Quarters Development Code or the Downtown Specific Plan, there are different setback standards as we previously mentioned. So in the, say, in a downtown specific plan, you would have your setbacks, you would create your envelope and you might be able to achieve more units. In a, say, your standard R3 zone, depending on your setbacks with, you know, 25-foot setbacks in the front and in the rear, it, it might impose a smaller development. So I think it would be a case-by-case basis and site-dependent.
Yeah, that's obvious. Thanks.
What would you like to do? I just wanted to see if we were gonna have a second motion. And you'll have to.
Oh, yeah, okay. I'll put a second motion up.
You could, you could propose a substitute motion, which would then be heard first.
Okay. So I will propose a substitute motion, making affordable housing fee zero for the lot line adjustment and for market rate or non-affordable. It would be half of, or we could say $2,000 just to make it a flat number so that we don't have to do a bunch of math. I don't know if one is preferred.
Commissioner Winiger.
I have a clarification for, for Director Diamond or for Grant. If something is coming in as a multifamily and it is doing, I think it's over so many units, it has to propose some type of affordable component, doesn't it?
Yes. So anything over seven units, whether it's for rent or for sale, does trigger inclusionary housing program. So for rent, seven or more units, the base density would be 15%, five to very low and then 10% to low income, sorry, 5% very low and 10% to low income. And then if it was a for-sale project, anything over seven units, that base density, they would need to provide 10% to the moderate income.
So if, if the zoning was 20 units an acre and you had half the size and now you've put them together, 20 units an acre, you'd have to do inclusionary housing or affordable housing, correct?
Depending, yeah. So if they have, are you saying 20?
Twenty units an acre.
Yes, yeah. So anything over seven would trigger the inclusionary housing program.
So almost every, almost all these projects probably would trigger some type of affordable housing theoretically.
Um, I, I think that's the other big thing to look at is, is the difference between affordable housing as well as inclusionary housing programs. So if you are doing the bare minimum of inclusionary housing, again, that's only, you know, 15% for rental, then if it's a. for rental, then if it's a 100 building or 100 units, you know, that's not what we would really deem affordable, usually affordable like we have with the development impact fees, anything 50% of the development or more.
So, I'm sorry, just to further clarify, but in this mo, in this, in the fee schedule on the previous slide, when you say affordable housing projects, if it, or it says right here, affordable housing projects, if, if it was 20 units an acre and it only did inclusionary housing, would you consider that qualifying for the, not, not paying a lot line adjustment fee?
And they only, and did the requirement of inclusionary, not more than the requirement of inclusionary?
Right.
That I would, do not believe we would deem as affordable. Because that's, they're just, you know, following our other ordinances within the city. If they were to do more than the inclusionary housing program to where it would be about 50% of the whole development as affordable, then that's usually what we deem affordable. But again, that is something that is up to you guys, whether it's 100% affordable, 50% affordable, or they're just meeting the inclusionary housing ordinance.
Thank you for all that.
Thank you, Commissioner Wenninger, that was actually quite helpful. Commissioner Comden?
So the proposal that I'm suggesting is a win-win compared to what one would expect to pay today or yesterday. If it's an affordable project, we waive the fee. If it's, if it's not, if it's market rate and/or forced into having affordability quotient, it's half the fee that it normally was. And I think it's a step in the right direction.
I'll second that motion.
So I believe we have to vote on the first motion first, correct?
Substitute first.
Oh, sorry, thanks. All right. Mr. Clerk, could we get a vote on the second motion?
Thank you Chair. So the substitute motion was to approve staff's recommendation with the amendment to maintain fees at 50% for lot line adjustments that are market rate? Okay. You can now enter your vote. Waiting on one more.
Mr. Clerk, question, I didn't hear you say eliminate the fee for affordable housing? Is, did you start it with, by saying that? So it's eliminate?
That's the staff's recommendation, isn't it?
Yes.
So that's, that's why I didn't mention it. But I can, we can specify that in the, in the motion, yeah. So that word, that passed, sorry.
Okay, and then we have to backtrack and do a vote on the, or?
Do not.
It passed, okay.
It passed, so you do not.
All right.
If it had not passed, you would go back to the original.
Got it, thank you. All right, moving forward to our last item on the agenda this evening. Same project, the San Bueno Ventura Municipal Code Chapters 24 and 25 Ordinance Update, State Density Bonus Law and Code Reorganization. Rachel, you're taking this one as well?
Me again.
Thank you.
Yes, so a quick background, Chapter 24.445 is the current city's density bonus regulations ordinance, and then 25.20 is the city's inclusionary housing program. There is no specific language update to the inclusionary housing program, but there is talk about combining it, so we'll go into more details about that, but just wanted preference with, with that. So background on the city of Ventura's current density bonus ordinance, it has not been updated since 2013. So since then, there has been numerous state laws that have been enacted. Some of the big ones include Assembly Bill 2345, which went into effect in 2021, Assembly Bill 1287, which went into effect in 2024, with additional state laws also that went into effect. A lot of these new state laws just include additional stacking options as well as increases in incentives and concessions, so I'll go a little bit more into the stacking on the next slide. So just to give an example, if a project meets 50% of the threshold, so if they, you know, again, going back to how many units they have to give, so anything more than 7% or seven units, they have to do 5% very low and 10% low income for rentals. So if someone were to offer 9% very low and then 10% low income, that's above what the inclusionary housing program requires, and that right there gives them 50% density bonus. So now that they're at 50% density bonus, Assembly Bill 713 says that they can now stack. So if they give an additional 5% very low income, then that gives them an additional 20% density bonus, which then gives them a full amount of 70% density bonus. So that's kind of what the stacking looks like. Housing Element and State Mandates, so this is Housing Element Program 27, and the objective is just by the end of 2024, update the city densities bonus ordinance to be consistent with state law. So that is what our draft ordinance is that we've presented today. That is significant updates to update with all of the current state laws. California Government Code also says all jurisdictions within the state must adopt an ordinance that specifies how compliance with state density bonus law will be implemented. And again, this update would also address that. So Chapter 24.445 is the residential density bonus regulations, and then Chapter 25 dot 20 is the inclusionary housing program. However, to get density bonus, you have to provide inclusionary housing. So you can't have density bonus without the inclusionary housing program. So staff has decided to make it one municipal code, so it would be Chapter 24.445, and it would then be titled the Affordable Housing Regulations. And all this is doing is combining our new draft ordinance for density bonus with the existing inclusionary housing program, and none of the language for the inclusionary housing program is changing, that's all remaining and staying the same. So it's the same seven units or more, 15% for rentals, 10% for, for sale units. And then staff recommends the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing and adopt the following resolution. So a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Bueno Ventura, recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance amending municipal code sections 24.445 and 25.20 to address change to state law and simplify the relationship between the two codes. Any questions or comments?
Thank you Rachel. Open it up for questions? Wow, okay, go ahead, just go ahead.
This is for council. Mr. City Attorney, does this make it more difficult for those that challenge some of the developments that are coming forward because we are consistent with state law in, in written form? I know state law supersedes, but does this facilitate our defense of certain decisions or make it more difficult in any way, or any comment on that?
Honestly, it's pretty hard to say. I don't know that it necessarily, that the one really much, has much to do with the other. The challenges typically relate to the specifics of a project and more precisely to the sufficiency of the findings made by the authorizing board, usually you guys. How that's codified in the city ordinance probably doesn't have a whole lot to do with that. Hypothetically, there might be circumstances where that's the case, but I, I think it's probably pretty unlikely.
I had a question for staff. So the, the last update for this was in 2013, as you said, and so are we feeling like the language is generic enough that it will hold for a decade and, you know, because since state law continues to change so rapidly?
No.
So is there a way to do that? So you guys are kind of covered?
I hate to jump in, but that's definitely an option where we can leave it super generic and just say, refer to state law, refer to state law. And it just feels so customer unfriendly and not helpful to anyone. Basically, that's what our code is today, it's just wrong, right? And so we always are deferring to state law. Generally, we're seeing an update to density bonus law. Frankly, we've had one almost every year for the past five years, and I think actually these five have had something. So the reality is, we should just be updating our regulations as those changes come in. There are kind of two schools of thought on this, and we went back and forth a million times. And, you know, it's a style choice, it really is for every city. Often, they'll just say, refer to state law, and they'll have a guide that they show you what the requirements are. But this community really wants to see these regulations mirrored in our own regulations. And so we really listen to that in this, so that someone could open our own regulations and never look at the state law and know exactly what our requirements are. Because there is some nuance that's Ventura-specific, and we can continue to evolve our Ventura-specific things within this, but not say, well, this sentence is right, but this sentence is wrong. So it's incumbent on us to actually continue to update, or we will fall out of line pretty quickly. And so with that, you know, we're doing all these zone text amendments, but we're going to update the entire zoning ordinance after we finish the general plan. So you'll see that next update. And then we're really looking at coming back each year, most likely, you know, in December of each year, for example, or probably November of each year, knowing what's going to be effective in January, and coming to Planning Commission and then going to council and having it in our code just for ease of use. It's, I, I really stand by this way, and it is more work intensive, but the community, I think, is better off because of it, because they actually understand what the rules are.
That makes a lot of sense to me, but I am just pointing out that it's been 12 years, so I guess the idea is not to wait 12 years again to update.
Never again.
Okay.
And I think that, you know, it's challenging because we have a lot to do, but now the staff understands that this is part of our work plan, and we will weave this in so that no matter who is on the staff, that they always know that every year we're looking at, okay, what are the changes to state law and what do we need to fix in our regulations? Especially when we don't just have a reference. I mean, definitions change ever so slightly, and that minor change to a definition completely changes projects, particularly with, with density bonus. So we really want to commit to an annual update to our regulations that reflects all of the kind of dynamic changes of being in California.
Commissioner Wenninger?
Thank you Chair. Chair Lagerquist actually kind of asked my exact same question, why don't we just say, you know, refer to state law? But do we have something in, in the housing element update that says, you know, a kind of a disclaimer on all these sections that refer to state law? Still, still saying, refer to state law? I mean, obviously, there's going to be, you know, a lag time sometimes, and it seems like that customer would, or developer would like to have that kind of, you know, disclaimer in there to say, refer to state law for the most recent thing. And that would include like ADU units and, you know, ADU law and all that stuff too. So is that?
So yeah, so again, the housing element is specific to like each city and things like that, so I think this specific language was because it was such an old update of 2013. So I think they were just definitely like, you know, let's make sure it's consistent with state law. We do have some verbiage throughout the ordinance as well that does say, you know, as state law applies, as, so we have some specific examples within it, but then there is also a line in it for a lot of those key points that say, as state law applies, just to try to help mitigate any of those major changes that might happen between now and a year from now.
One more question, do you have, like, you have the 2021, 2029, but do you, because we consistently update the housing element with different, different things, do you have an amendment, like amendment page or anything that shows when it was last amendment, amended?
For the housing element specifically?
Yes.
For the housing element, it's been certified, and then at this point, we haven't had any amendments. Amendments would be more so if there was like a major change or things like that, or if, you know, we had five objectives or programs that, you know, we got direction from city council and planning commission to not follow through with, then that would be when there's an amendment. But there's not like a yearly amendment or things like that for the housing element. And then if there were an amendment, it would have to go through being recertified and things like that.
And that's definitely something we're trying to avoid based on the difficulty of getting certification to begin with. So we really do want to honor that process and try to work within it. I think there are ways around actual amendments. For example, if a project that's a housing element site builds something other than housing, there are ways to use that approval to designate other sites, for example, for future housing instead, without actually amending the document itself. And those types of procedures are created because the certification process is so arduous. As you know, different regions of the state go through the certification process at different times, and there's another region going through that process right now. Thankfully, our region is pretty much done. But we really would like to kind of work within the confines of this plan and honor it because of all of that community work for as long as possible.
Commissioner Comden?
Yep, me again. These are, become effective on the state level generally in January. I seem to recall a lot of media say, and these are the new laws for the year, so it's a January thing.
They typically do it that way, but it could be effective immediately in some cases or within 60 days of, you know, an ordinance being adopted or rather.
Right. So we should expect something every February, because it'll take you a month to examine and write something, honor thereabouts, with an exceptional one if something becomes immediately effective.
Typically, these bills are happening prior to the end of the legislative session, and so you'll see the governor signing a lot of the bills at the very latest by September. So ideally, instead of waiting till after it's effective, we're doing it right away. And we follow bills pretty closely. We're ramping up our work with, you know, having state lobbyists as well, so they keep us surprised of all of these, you know, pending bills. So we can get a sense of, as things move through committee, what do we need to watch? Okay, this was, you know, this was approved, and then, you know, was it signed by the governor? And that can spring us into action. So ideally, we're having a second reading at council early December, and we're close enough to that January 1st, possible.
Good feedback, thank you.
I just have one more question. It's a clarification question on 24 dash 445 dot, sorry, dot 060, the number under D, findings for denial of waiver reduction. On number four, I just didn't understand, the decision-making body shall grant the waiver reduction of development standards requested by the applicant unless it makes a written finding to deny based upon substantial evidence of any of the following. And number four is, the development standards for which a waiver or reduction is requested do not physically prevent the construction of the housing development at the densities. I just don't understand, I'm having trouble understanding that one.
Sorry, trying to pull it up on my side as well. I don't know if Director Diamond has.
Can you repeat the section number? And presumably the full question while we're at it, while I'm looking it up.
It's 060D. Unless the development standards for which a waiver or reduction is requested do not physically prevent the, the housing development at the densities. Yes.
Sorry, I had 12,000 ordinances open. It's on page. No numbers on these pages, huh? Sorry about that.
PDF, it's 11 of 33.
Yeah. And so it's?
This is, this is just a restatement of the standard for denying a waiver. I've phrased it to this body in a slightly different way, which is generally speaking, you can deny a wa, well, the, the requirement for a waiver is, in theory, they're, they're theoretically unlimited, you could get an unlimited number of waivers. The standard is that the waiver has to be physically necessary to build the structure at the requested density. So this is a statement of that in the reverse. You could deny it if it's, if you make a finding that it's not physically necessary to construct it at the requisite density.
Okay, thank you, that, that was very helpful.
And that burden of proof is solely on the city, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thanks. Okay, that is all my questions. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, are there any public speakers on this? Mr. Clerk, are there any public speakers on this matter tonight?
Thank you, Chair, no public speakers on this item.
All right, thanks. I will then close it, and moving forward, Commission, do you want to deliberate more or anyone ready for a motion? Commissioner Zucker?
I think it's pretty straightforward, and yeah, unless anyone has anything burning, I'm, I'm ready to, motion to approve staff recommendation.
Commissioner McCarty, did you have any comments?
No, but I will second that motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Can we call the vote, please?
Okay, you can now enter your vote to approve staff's recommendation. Six ayes.
Great, that wraps up our agenda items this evening. For planning communications, I just had one question of staff before we adjourn. I don't think staff has any communications this evening.
Not today, thank you.
Okay, so the legal, last meeting, the legal representation for the developer, the developer was, did an excellent job of explaining state laws. Just maybe an idea at some point, or periodically, we could have some sort of presentation like that, going through the state laws. He really did a great job on explaining, you know, how they are, they are intertwined and they affect each other and things like that, something like that, and something that could be presented at the meeting to the public, I think, just an idea.
I think that's a great idea, and it's something that we've been working on in the background already for staff, and it's absolutely something we can bring to the Planning Commission. We'll look at our agendas moving forward, see where we have an hour or two to carve out, and frankly, start peppering that, again, you know, the same way that we'll come to you each year with an update, we should be coming to you with an update on legislative changes at the state as well, to understand not only the stuff that we have to change in our code, but there's stuff outside of that, too. So I agree, that was a really great presentation, and we'll absolutely either have our internal legal team, who are fantastic, or some of our outside team as well that could come in and do some training. Thank you for that.
Yeah, sure. Any other comments for staff? All right, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you so much. Happy April Fool's Day.
That's right, oh, man, that's an opportunity missed.